I've got seven oh two, Mayor.
Can I pull up a file? Just give me another minute. All right, I'm sorry for that delay. Trying to open a couple of documents and they're just frozen up. Call this meeting to order July 7th. At nineteen oh six. And first order of business. James, will you lead the pledge of allegiance?
Thank you, Mayor. To the flag.
To the flag. United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Thank you. Jackie, will you do roll call?
Counselor Hooker.
Here.
Counselor Bjornson. Here. Counselor Whitney.
Here.
Counselor Kenyon.
Here.
Counselor Coker.
Here.
Counselor Spleedoff.
Here.
Did you call for Mayor Hollid?
Oh, yeah, I thought you said somebody answered for you.
That's okay. I'm here, obviously. Thank you. All right, I don't have the agenda in front of me. I'm just having a difficulty pulling that up. So the next order of business, public comment. Thank you, I appreciate that. Counselors, do you have any additions, corrections? And actually, counselors or city administrator, do you have any additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda? All right. First thing up is public comment, but before we get into that, I do want to welcome our new city administrator, Mr. James Clevenger. We're really excited to have you on board and welcome to your first meeting. I know he's kind of already hit the ground running, had a busy couple last days, so excited to for the future.
Thank you, Mayor.
So right into public comment, do you have anyone there inside City Hall? I'm going to go ahead and start with Zoom. Mr. Dan Barclay.
Dan Barclay, four seven five oh one, Highway fifty-eight. Congratulations, James, for your promotion to the position of Oak Ridge City Administrator and I can make counsel along with everyone else involved in the hiring process. I cannot imagine anyone more capable of restoring the dignity, integrity, leadership, and professionalism commensurate with an office that these qualities have been diminished by deceit, defiance, arrogance, and ego for many years. No pressure, James, but I look forward to watching the long overdue and necessary course change you will undoubtedly embark upon in steering Oak Ridge to a brighter future. Thank you. Oh, and I do want to thank council. The last few meetings, the the post, the videos have been posted in a very timely manner while we await the condensed hard copy. And timely version of the hard copy minutes, and I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barclay. James, do you have anyone in City Hall for public comment?
I don't believe, no, no one for public comment.
Okay, go ahead, Trudy Hammond.
I too want to congratulate James Clevenger and have high expectations for what's going to be some real good positive changes in our future. I'm so excited. I think that we have the perfect team in leadership this year and for years to come. And I think the unification has just begun. And secondly, I have a statement I'd like to read.
She didn't give her name and address.
Oh, thank you, Audi. Trudy Hammond, seven, six, three, four, nine, Willamette Way. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Human rights are the articulation of the need for justice, tolerance, mutual respect, and human dignity. All individuals are a part of the scope of morality and justice. To protect human rights is to ensure that people receive some degree of decent humane treatment. I was denied my fundamental moral entitlement. I have been treated less than human and undeserving of respect and dignity as well as my disregard of my disability. My professional guidance as an animal advocate, director of animal safety center was dismissed disrespectfully and heard and undermined on Wednesday, June twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-two. A voiceless dog was removed from my safety center and put into a situation with zero concern or thought to a smooth transition in the best interest of the dog, which is our program policy. I am the advocate for the animals in my safety center. I asked OPD for time to consult an attorney scheduled Friday, July first regarding this dog, in which case I was informed if I remained in possession of the seized property, I would have leverage to collect my fees owed by the accused. I was denied my income or my preferred outcome, ownership of the dog in lieu of the debt owed by the accused. I understand it was Chief of Police Pro Tem's decision to allow me to hold a return of the seized property for the three days, but not to exceed thirty days of the court order or not. I was denied that request and diverted from operating according to our program policies. For now, I ask City Council to invite David Rosengard of Animal Legal Defense Fund to come assist with the terminology, the structure of our animal ordinances and implement a cohesive foundation with animal state laws for our city to enforce. Mr. Rosengard can also educate what to what capacity seized property of living matter needs special consideration. I believe our community deserves the best and should another scenario of live animal seizure occur, our police department can implement more compassion with compliance per city policy. Thank you.
Trudy, will you send me a copy of that, please?
Yes, yes, Jackie, I can do that.
Thank you.
You bet.
And Trudy, have you already emailed that to council?
I edited it. I changed it and took out more of the emotion that I had and made it more less angry, if that's any kind of a term.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone on the Zoom that would like to speak in public comment?
Mayor, it's Brian Kutchin, four eight three zero zero, Hill Street.
Thank you. I had your letter ready to read, but if you're here in person, even better.
I don't have it in front of me, so please go ahead.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
If you're about ready to start reading that, could I ask, can I respond to it in order? There's several different things mentioned I'd like to respond to individually.
Okay. So so that the public knows, Mr. Kutchin sent in a almost a two-page letter in response to the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three city budget. So I'll go ahead and start reading it and so you want to respond to it where it says on page, is that what you're saying, Counselor Kenyon?
Um, I don't have the original written.
Okay.
I broke it up by sections and covered each section.
Okay, Brian Kutchin, four eight three zero zero, Hill Street, Oak Ridge, Oregon. On June twenty-eighth, the City Council closed out the current fiscal year by passing the FY twenty-two, twenty-three budget, keeping great praise upon each other and themselves for the smoothness and lack of conflict during the process as compared to last year. And yes, it did seem as if the council was one was of one mind during the budget process. The Budget Committee and City Council went about this process in a timeframe of three months and feeling flush with revenue. Gleefully increased expenditures across the board, a stark contrast to last year's dark deliberations on how to balance the budget, including discussion of a public safety fee. What changed outside some belt tightening by the city staff in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one? Absolutely nothing. Expect a windfall grant from the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one. A closer look at the detail underlying the budget summary reveals some significant flaws to significant flaws the City Council chose not to correct or could not comprehend. General Fund, Prand Resources. On page three, line two, since no ARPA expenditures or transfers occurred this past year, this number should be at least three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars.
Mayor?
Yes, is that where you would like to respond?
Sure, well, I'll back up just a little bit. In a in a previous paragraph, he asked what changed. And what changed was that we discovered there had been a formula error in the columns of the budget. It was not catching all the revenue figures, so we fixed it and we did not have a shortfall. And then as far as the ARPA fund expenditures or transfers, he says this number should be at least three hundred and seventy-four thousand. However, he may not be aware that the transfers did happen at the end of the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, and the financial reports will show that.
Mayor, it's Brian Kutchin. I request my statement to be read in whole before being
Okay.
admonished by Counselor Kenyon. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, I'll go on. So on page three, line two, since no ARPA expenditures or transfers occurred this past year, the number should be at least three hundred and seventy-four thousand. In the General Fund Police, on page eight, line sixty, the line shows a capital outlay of CMAC matching funds without corresponding revenue line entry on line fifty-four of the General Fund Revenue, page three. General Fund, Munich Court. On page twelve, line six, no COLA increase was budgeted for court clerk as required by her collective bargaining unit. And in the General Fund Requirements Not Allocated, page thirteen, inter-fund transfers out one hundred thousand of ARPA revenue should have been transferred to the wastewater fund to cover an approved ARPA project for INI. On line eighteen, the transfer out does not match the corresponding transaction in the Emergency Service Fund. Line twenty-nine, no required entry was made. There should be the sum of all general fund departmental appropriated expenditures. Line thirty-six, no entry. The budget summary indicates it should be three hundred and ninety-nine thousand and three hundred and nine dollars. Line thirty-seven, because of all the above requirements, do not match expenditures. Next page. Emergency Services Fund, page sixteen. Line one and line eighty-one, there was no budgeted transfer of ARPA funds to the Emergency Services Fund last year. There was no supplemental budget. The one hundred thousand is still in the General Fund. Oak Ridge Industrial Park, page twenty. Line one fails to recognize a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar property sale. Water Fund, page twenty-two. Line one, the beginning balance brought forward doubled. Looking at the current adopted budget and previous year's budget, this looks questionable. Water revenues can increase no more than CPI dash W. Wastewater Fund, page twenty-three, line two. As with Water Fund, the opening balance looks questionable. Line nine, there is no transfer of a hundred thousand to ARPA revenue from the General Fund to cover ARPA project on line sixty-nine. Due to those errors, the General Fund is at least two hundred thousand out of balance with expenditures exceeding revenue. With the likelihood of the public safety fee being rescinded, this would put the shortfall at four hundred and forty thousand dollars, curiously close to the stated shortfall in last year's budget discussion. Given the experience of the city staff, the fact there were some mistakes made in the proposed budget is understandable. But to have a highly experienced city council not catch these errors who combined have likely been through the budget process for over twenty times is disappointing. Even the self-anointed budget wonk on council did not ferret out these anomalies and voted to adopt this budget. Some might consider this missive or sour grapes given the comparison to the conflict which occurred in last year's budget cycle. However, it is not surprising the budget process this year ran like clockwork. Instead of taking on the difficult issues head-on, this city council once again chose to kick the can down the road through creative budgeting and questionable ARPA accounting. Unfortunately, the end of the road is in sight. The citizens request an immediate adoption of a supplemental budget with action which accurately reflects the city councils apportionment of our tax and fee for service revenue. And that's the end. Counselor Kenyon, where would you like to begin?
I'll just read my responses. I'll try and give a brief recap of recap of what they're in reference to. His first question was basically what changed from last year to this year? And my answer is that what changed was we discovered there had been a formula error in the columns on the budget that was not catching all of the revenue figures, so we fixed it. The second section is on General Fund. He's asking about the ARPA expenditures or transfers. And says the number should be at least three hundred and seventy-four thousand. Those transfers did happen at the end of fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. And the financial reports reflect that. In the General Fund Police, he says on line sixty, the line shows capital outlay of CMAC matching funds without a corresponding revenue. And this is only going to be spent if the that line will only be spent if the grant is awarded and received, at which point we will do a supplemental budget to add the revenue in the General Fund, and that's common practice. We've done that numerous times over the years. On page twelve, he says no COLA increase was budgeted for the court clerk. That was actually because the wages for that position were overstated in the prior year's budget. So it may not look like an increase, but it actually is. And then inter-fund transfers of a thousand, a hundred thousand of ARPA revenue should have been transferred to the wastewater fund to cover an ARPA project for INI. Actually, that money was transferred in this fiscal year prior to the end of the year. And so it rolls over in the beginning fund balance of that fund. On line eighteen, the amount was updated prior to final adoption by the council. And you may have actually been reviewing a draft version of this budget. I checked on the city's website and the only version that's posted right now is actually not the adopted, the budget that we adopted. Line twenty-nine, thirty-six, and thirty-seven, those amounts were updated prior to final adoption by the council, and you may have been reviewing a draft version of the budget. Emergency Services Fund, line one and eighty-one. He says there's no budgeted transfer of ARPA funds, and again, that transfer was made at the end of fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two and rolled over into the beginning fund balance of the Emergency Services Fund for the for next year. The Oak Ridge Industrial Park Fund. He says it fails to recognize a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar property sale. This is accurate. We are going to have to research the receipt of the property sale revenue and get this number updated. And we'll have to do that in the process of a supplemental budget. The next one, the Water Fund, beginning balance brought forward doubled. This is due to the repayment of the loan from the prior year. During this fiscal year, we repaid the loan at the end of this year, and it's rolling over in the beginning fund balance for the next fiscal year. That's why it looks huge. Same with the wastewater repayment was made at the end of this year and rolled over. On down to due to these errors, there's going to be a shortfall. There's actually no shortfall. Please review the final adopted budget after it's posted on the city's website, which is probably going to be July sixteenth. I heard that it will be have to be submitted to the state on the fifteenth, and then they'll get it posted as quickly as possible thereafter. As to the reference to, I'm assuming me being a self-anointed budget wonk, I actually thank you. I will take that as a compliment. The self-anointed budget wonk did catch all but one of the items items that you have listed and several other adjustments that needed to be made throughout this entire budget process. Most were corrected prior to the final adoption by council. Except that one in the industrial park. And my final comment is thank you for taking the time after the budget process was completed to review the budget and offer your valuable insight. I hope you'll have the time to look at the adopted version of the budget in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we put the agenda back up on the screen?
Mayor, since Counselor Kenyon chose to ask about the budget and respond to each of these, may I have a response back in public comment? I got the budget the day before the City Council chose to adopt it. So I assume that was nothing with no changes being administered during the meeting. I assume that was the adopted budget. So it is what it is, and Counselor Kenyon can make that rep, you know, allegation however she liked, but in reality, this is what I had as a citizen was able to get for information from city staff and from the city council as to what the budget is. The fact that the budget was unavailable on the city website is not a problem for a citizen. It's a problem for city council, so I would suggest you time timely submission of the budget under consideration before the meetings. Thank you.
And I agree with that. Thank you. And I agree with that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you both. Is there any more for public comment? All right, counselors, do you counselors, or excuse me. That was public comment. Uh, now we are on to mayor comment. And I do have, uh, one announcement I want to make. One of our former mayors, um, on behalf of the city council. All of the city of Oak Ridge employees, we wish to express our deepest condolences upon learning that former Oak Ridge Mayor Judy Roland passed away on July fifth. Mayor Roland was a pillar of the community and she will be dearly missed. Flags are already at half-staff through Saturday in honor of the victims of the Highland Park, Illinois shooting. They will remain at half-staff throughout the weekend until Monday, July eleventh in honor of Mayor Roland. And that letter was put out by City Administrator Clevenger. Thank you very much. And the city will be sending the letter along with flowers to the family. And I do not know of any services yet at this time. Counselors, do you have any, um, council comments? All right. Yes, go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't find my hand here.
That's okay.
I would like to also send my condolences to the family. I have not heard of this yet. So, uh, my condolences out there. I'm very sure, sorry it happened and shocked. Thank you.
Yeah. Counselor Whitney, did you have? Go ahead.
Yeah, have you moved on to ma- or council comments?
Yes, we're in ca- we're in counselor comments right now.
Okay, so I just wanted to, um, bring up the, the work group for, um, volunteer appreciation. And last I talked to Kevin, there are no city staff to volunteer. So I'd like to just quickly see how we would.
Yeah, we're losing.
If you want to just move forward.
I'm sorry, Bobby, we lost everything there. It's really garbled unless anybody else heard it. I didn't.
I'm sorry, what was that?
It's really garbled. We couldn't hear you.
Sorry. So, um, the volunteer appreciation group. It's my understanding, after talking to Kevin, that there's no city staff for, as volunteers to be on that group. So I would like to see how we would like to proceed as council if we want to just continue with the three, um, counselors that are on that group? Or, you know, what we would like to do moving forward.
Who were we chose? I know you were leading the group. I said I would help and there, was it you, Counselor Kenyon?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm available to help. So if you just want to set up a time, I'm absolutely willing to help.
Okay. Yeah, I think there'll be four of us and then we can just post it the day before.
Uh, wait a minute, what do you mean by four?
Who else was up? I don't have my notes in front of me.
I think it was just the three of us.
I think Jan was on it.
Oh, maybe. Okay. Um, how about the three of you then?
Okay.
Okay.
I think, I think Mayor Hollid, I think that's what it was.
Okay.
And I had said I would be interested. So you backed down.
Great. Yeah, that's probably what it was. All right. So the three of you.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. I will reach out and get something scheduled.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other counselor comments? All right. Well, I would like to just say one little thing, even though I passed mayor comments. We did do the Fourth of July Festival and that is a separate committee that I am involved in, um, aside from the city, but um, as the mayor position, I just want to thank all the city staff that showed up and played a really big role in it. Especially Clevenger, Scott Hollid, Chief Martin, they were all there and put many hours in and other people on the fire department helping with hose and just many, many hours went from city staff helping make that happen and be a part of it. And I think it was a huge success. I've heard nothing but just awesome feedback from, um, community. So thank you guys for being a part of a really good event. Is there any other council comment? All right, down to consent agenda. Sir, a motion from the floor?
I'll move. We approve the consent agenda.
Sir, a second?
Well, second.
Motion made by Counselor Kenyon and seconded by Counselor Whitney. Call for the vote, Jackie.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Mayor Hollid?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. All right, um, nine point one. Do you have information on that one, James? The League of Oregon Cities Legislative Priorities Ballot?
Yes, so this should be included in the packet. I'll see if I can scroll down to it. These are the legislative initiatives from League of Oregon Cities. Uh, as a council, I believe you need to approve it. You wish to do so by August fifth. This document is eleven pages. And I don't know if council was ready to vote on this tonight or, or if they want to review it or vote on it in the next meeting.
Counselors, have you had a chance to look at it? Or do you want to go ahead, Counselor Kenyon?
I would like to take some time to go through it. To research a little better. And then it says that we get one vote. This, this whole council gets one vote. So, you know, we could all reprioritize and and we might have seven different versions of what we think is most important. So somehow we have to figure out how to agree on what we want submitted as a vote as a, as a whole. And then our city administrator would have the privilege to place the vote for us through their website. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yeah.
So I feel like we should take the time to review and then a- and since the deadline is in August, we'll have to maybe collect potential ballots from everyone ahead of time and then organize it in a way that whatever got the most votes would be the I think they're looking for what each city's top five priorities are. And so I think we could come up with that after maybe collecting information from each person prior to our next meeting and then at the meeting deciding if we're going to vote on whatever the top five came out of it. And it looks like, um, Counselor Whitney has her hand raised.
Go ahead, Counselor Whitney.
Um, I think it would be, um, I agree with bringing this to the next council meeting, but I think it would be great to let our new city administrator have a chance to really dig into it and come back with his recommendations. So our and then all of us come back prepared to, um, have more detailed discussion. What's most important to us, but, um, I think it would be a lot easier for him to help provide that, that guidance. And, you know, what he sees, um, would be more valuable from his standpoint and his position as city administrator. And especially with all the legal history and background he has, I would think this is right up his alley to really, um, being able to give us some good, strong, solid ideas.
I like that idea as well. Are you amicable, amicable to that, James?
Yes, of course. That would be fine.
Okay. Any other thoughts from counselors? All right, let's go ahead and, um, have James take a look at that and then we can table that. Maybe we should uh, bring it back to the July twenty-first meeting. That way we can get in before the deadline. All right. Can we roll, scroll back to the agenda?
Yes.
All right, ten point one. Westford IGA. Go ahead, James.
Okay, so there, there are three IGAs here, um, the first one being the Westford Fire IGA. And, uh, this contract, my understanding, it was, uh, negotiated by Ronan and also Chief Martin to some extent. I think there Counselor Kenyon may have had questions about this one, or maybe it was, uh, the police one.
It was that one. And the same questions would apply to all of them.
Gotcha. So, uh, your general questions, uh, at the end, let me see if I can scroll down to the schedule of payments, which is the last page on each IGA. Okay, so you'll see uh, this will use in column one, uh, the amounts in column two should actually, it should be better if it read amount increase. And then the totals, uh, are in the third column and that accounts for what was negotiated as an increase for each year plus what was previously negotiated as an increase for each year, if that makes sense. So might have even been nicer to have a fourth column somewhere in here. So you could, so the math makes sense. But this additional eighteen thousand three hundred and ninety-one, that's my understanding is that is what was agreed upon to add to every year in addition to the annual additions that were previously negotiated. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so that middle column, it feels like it should be titled as increase instead of amount.
Yeah.
That would make more sense, wouldn't it?
It would. And, and basically, I again, what Westford was willing to do and was negotiated is you know, they, they, they can't pay into the public safety fee because they're not Oak Ridge citizens. But they realize we are in, uh, you know, financial difficulties and they were willing to pitch in. So this is kind of their, uh, in-kind contribution to public safety fee type monies. If that makes sense.
What's our current amount that we pay that, that they pay us per contract?
Sixteen thousand eight hundred.
That's what they paid for
last year.
Twenty-one, twenty-two?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
So the amount that it increased this year was eighteen thousand three hundred and ninety-one. Bringing it up to a total of thirty-five one ninety-one. And it's surprising to me for such a small community that they would be willing to increase that much every single year is you're absolutely positive. James?
Well, one thing to consider, our annual, uh, contracts, so either party could, uh, cease the contract by the end of the years, but this is what they, um, are planning to do.
Okay.
And that, and that's the same with the, with the, uh, police IGA, which is the second one.
So the police one is going up fifteen thousand per year?
Correct.
Okay. So my, um, just the only thing I, just for terminology and clarification, I'm okay with as it is me personally. But I would like to see that language changed on the table instead of saying amount. I would prefer that it says annual increase. Um, just because that, when it says amount there, that seems a little ambiguous to me. And if it said annual increase, it just seems a little more obvious that that's the, um, intention.
I agree with you.
You're cutting out a little bit.
The, the important numbers, obviously. Well, the important numbers obviously are what's in the third column.
Yeah.
But you're right, it is confusing.
Well, okay.
Do you have any more thoughts, Counselor Kenyon?
Well, I just have to say it's it's very weird to me because, for example, the twenty-two dollar public safety fee that we have for our own citizens isn't doubling every year. So it's just really odd to me that they would be willing to, like, right now their contract is sixteen thousand. Well, up by eighteen, which doubles it.
And I do, I see what you're saying, but I've brought this contract up every year since I've been a counselor. And my opinion has always been that both the fire contract and the police contract were extremely low. And that was before we even, the public safety fee was even a thought or presented to council. So oh, um, for me, I, I personally see it closer to reality of what, um, you know, I've always thought that both fire and police, um, contracts should be higher. So they could be, you know, considering the public safety fee and more, what's a little more realistic. Do you think that could be part of it, James?
That is, that is my understanding. I mean, for instance, last month, you know, we normally contract for twenty hours of service in Westford for police only and we were well over one hundred hours. That's, that's just last month.
Counselor Bjornson?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we can, um, request the CA to verify that this is the right wording in the amounts just before we vote on this. Because I see what Counselor Kenyon's saying, but I do agree with you that they've historically been a bit on the low side. Uh, I just want to be sure that this is what well we should be having here we vote.
Can you guys hear me? This is Chief Martin.
Yep.
Well, I can't speak to the fire one because I wasn't really involved in that one, but the police one, those are the correct numbers we agreed to.
Oh, thank you, Chief.
So and a little back, a little background to that, uh we paid a certain amount, which I always believed as the mayor said was too low. But after the public safety fee came to effect, Mr. Cutten had negotiated with them for a similar type fee of the public safety fee. Uh when Kevin Cronin came in, he did not want to do that. He wanted to do more of an automized fee where it went up a certain amount every year. And that was just the price of the contract. And I believe he looked at uh some other cities that contracted for fire and police uh and thought that we were very low compared to other cities that are doing similar things.
Okay, what's the um contract end date? So if we were to table both of these contracts until the next meeting, would they be out of contract for service?
Yes.
On both fire and police?
Yes.
Well, darn. Go ahead, Counselor Bjornson.
Yeah, I'm I'm comfortable voting on it if we're sure, and I'm glad that Chief spoke up um saying that he's sure that these are the right numbers. It just seemed like there was some some uncertainty. So I'm if that's how it went down, I'm comfortable voting on this tonight.
Myself as well.
Um and another thing to note, I believe they were actually paying a little bit more with the agreement they made with Mr. Cutten. And this lowered it a little bit for this year, but then as the things go up each year, it'll get us to a a more normal number, in my opinion, especially for the police contract, in my opinion, because they're getting police services. And well, let me let me back up real quick, just the Lowell contract, we just do forty hours, period. But West for we do twenty hours plus emergency calls, but sometimes emergency calls make it much more, if that makes sense.
Absolutely.
Well, it's a little more simple because it's just a flat rate for forty hours. When we're not in Lowell, we don't answer calls there. Then Westford, when we're not there, we still have to answer calls there.
Go ahead, Counselor Whitney.
Um, I agree with the contract with the suggested wording changes to the on the payment schedule table at the bottom. Um, I I think it's fine. I I think it's nice to see an increase like this. I think it's much and it shows that they're willing to carry the extra burden like um our citizens are. So the payment schedule table.
Counselor Whitney, you're very garbled there, but I think we understood most of what you were saying.
Okay, so you got my motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not get that you made a motion.
I did so um. I moved to approve the Oak Ridge West for I G A for fire services with the suggested changes to the payment scheduled table.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Counselor Whitney, seconded by Counselor Coker. Uh any more discussion? I just have one more question and just to confirm that if there are changes, because this is a four-year contract. If there is changes in between, is this something we can still negotiate in the middle?
This is Chief Martin, technically still a one-year.
I'm sorry, what was that?
It's technically still one-year contract.
Okay, so this okay, then the schedule is not necessarily set in stone.
No, it is not. That was the suggestion that uh we came to a verbal agreement to.
Okay, so by voting yes on, um so we're voting on the fire contract right now, right?
Mm-hmm.
Can we scroll back up to the fire one? So really, just what I'm asking, it's a one-year contract. Um if we do approve it, are we still renewing it by con per contract every annual year? Or is this an automatic renewal and then it follows the schedule of payments?
My understanding is that a new contract will have to be approved every year. The schedule payments on the last page is is kind of like a letter of agreement.
Okay. So but if we decide next
verbally promised to do in
Okay.
future years.
Okay, so if we felt like um the year two wasn't enough, do we still have an opportunity to renegotiate that?
Technically, we would.
Okay.
You know, but if if some catastrophe happened, a flood takes out half of West for or something.
They would also have the opportunity to renegotiate. Okay, that sounds fair. Is there any more uh discussion? All right, Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Mayor Hollitt.
I.
Counselor Whitney.
Hi.
Counselor Hooker.
I.
Counselor Kenyon.
I.
Counselor Spleedoff. Counselor Bjornson.
I.
Counselor Coker.
I.
Thank you. Motion carried. Uh Colleen, are you online? I just have a question for you.
Yes.
So that's about an eighteen thousand dollar budget budget change. Um and I'm assuming that is not reflected in the budget we just adopted.
Correct.
Okay, so that would be um something we would have to put in a supplemental.
Right, and we already plan on doing one anyway, so.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted that clarification.
Yep.
Can we check that? Because I believe that was in the budget.
Okay.
Oh, we had that and we had that already, Chief.
Yes, I believe all the contract amounts in the budget should have been correct.
Oh, okay, we will check that.
Yeah, if you can just confirm, that'd be great.
Okay.
It would be the same same for police and fire, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, moving on to ten point two.
So this one is the West for police I G A. Scroll down. So again, this is a one-year contract. I'll go to the last page to see the increases. So good for this year, they've agreed to pay the additional fifteen thousand. And to continue that next three budget years. And then the twenty-five, twenty-six budget year, it's only a five thousand increase because they will have already increased their contribution by forty-five thousand dollars. And again, that's just an agreement, verbal agreement. The only thing they're really on the hook for is the one-year contract at this point.
All right, either entertain a discussion or a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the Oak Ridge West for I G A for law enforcement services as presented.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made by Counselor Spleedoff and seconded by Counselor Coker. Any discussion?
Can I make a friendly amendment to that?
Um, I'm gonna go ahead and let Counselor Whitney first because I think she had her hand raised first.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Imagine we're all on the same page.
Oh, no, you're freezing up again.
Amendment to the motion to um adjust the wording on the table.
Yeah.
Long.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'd like to just make a suggestion for a friendly amendment to um add wording to adjust or to adjust the word on the
I think annual increment increment or increase might sound better. Is that what you were thinking, Counselor Bjornson?
Exactly.
Okay. Do you accept that friendly amendment, Coker and Spleedoff?
Yes, I do.
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Okay. And Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Counselor Bjornson.
I.
Counselor Spleedoff.
I.
Counselor Coker.
I.
Counselor Hooker.
I.
Counselor Kenyon.
I.
Counselor Whitney.
I.
Mayor Hollitt.
I.
Motion carried. Thank you. On to ten point three.
At ten point three is the Lowell Police I G A, and this is simply a one-year contract. Uh where was to go, let me scroll down. It's negotiated that we would provide four hundred and eighty hours of service at a rate of sixty-six eighty-five an hour for a total of thirty-two thousand eighty-seven and eighty-three cents. I believe in addition to uh the license that's highlighted here, uh one thousand five hundred and seventy-five for a Motorola software license, which I believe is on top of the thirty-two thousand. Is that correct, Chief Martin?
Yes, that's correct. And that this contract was raised by COLA five point five percent. It was given to us by El Cog.
So for public transparency, would you guys mind talking a little bit about how we provide services to Lowell? I think it's just a good reminder to our citizens how they just so that they know how we how we operate and that it doesn't necessarily take away from our full-time police officer here in city limits.
Yeah, I can speak to that. A lot of our Lowell time is done by uh Reserve Lieutenant Ritz and Reserve Charlie Diaz, and then the fill-in time is also done by full-time officers, and we try to do a lot of that when we're coming and going to jail.
Thank you. Counselors, do you have a motion or any discussion? My only question is, how much did it increase from last year? Just the percentage that you mentioned and the addition of the Motorola radio?
Oh, the the software contract is, this is the second year of that, and the increase was five point five percent.
So I'm looking at the um prior or the current year's budget was twenty-nine thousand seven hundred, to give you perspective, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, if there isn't any more discussion, do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the Oak Ridge Lowell I G A for law enforcement services as presented.
Counselor Whitney, did you have a second or a question?
A question. Um, how did we come up with the, was it five point five percent COLA?
Uh, Kena from El Cog gave me that number.
Okay. Just, I'm just wondering with um the increase of costs everywhere and with the cost of inflation and how much that has gone up, if that is really an appropriate percentage or if it should actually be a little bit higher.
Uh, the COLA increases typically are set from the year before the twelve months. So this was or January first, twenty-one to December thirty-first, twenty-one.
Go ahead, Counselor Spleedoff.
Uh, I just got checking back over. I thought I read it too and was up in the uh thing for the West for will pay the license fee also that wasn't mentioned. And it was in this motion, so I don't know, should we include that or just?
I'm not, I'm not sure I'm following what you're suggesting. Can you say that again?
Okay, in the West for police motion that was made to accept it, it also has a license fee of fifteen seventy-five.
Well, that's in the contract, so the motion was to accept the contract, so that would include anything that's written in the contract.
Okay, I just want to make sure because it was specified in this other one for Lowell down here, so.
No, it's the motion as recommended is fine.
Okay.
Mayor, and she did, when she made the motion, she did say as presented, which I would think would include that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, do we still have a second on that motion that was made?
Counselor Hooker did.
Okay, so a motion made by Counselor Coker and seconded by Counselor Hooker. Is there any more discussion? All right, Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Counselor Hooker.
I.
Counselor Bjornson.
I.
Counselor Whitney.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
I.
Counselor Coker.
I.
Counselor Spleedoff.
I.
Mayor Hollitt.
I.
Motion carried. All right, on to, we don't have any staff reports today. All right, James, did you have anything else for today under city business? You want to tell how your first couple days went?
Sure, uh I I speaking to uh Sure, uh I I speaking to uh. One of our former city administrators today and they made analogy that uh they felt. Like it was streaking out of a fire hose sometimes when you start a new job like this. And it does feel like that. I think that's a good analogy. A lot of information uh coming from all directions, but. Uh, I'm excited about it. Um, and I'm proud and grateful uh to have been selected. And I hope that I can uh. Fill expectations. In the job, so uh I I made further comments on Tuesday's meeting, which are available on YouTube. And I plan to write an open letter to citizens here soon, which I will post online, but. Just thank you to uh council and to citizens for putting a trust in me and I hope I can earn it.
Good. Thank you, James. All right, any staff reports today? I think not tonight, right?
Next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Can I add something real quick, Mayor Hollitt?
Absolutely.
Uh, I'm volunteering myself and Sergeant McPherson, one or the other of us or both to help with the. Volunteer appreciation.
Oh, thank you. That would be awesome. Um, I did have one quick question for you, Chief. Are you guys doing National Night Out this year?
We are gonna try uh to, so yes.
And if that.
Let me say, I have to get the touch spaces with Michael first since she's on vacation right now, but our plan was to. But that was before our staffing crunch, but hopefully we'll have some relief before then, so.
Okay, I'm happy to help with that. If you guys need help, is that August second?
I it's the first Tuesday in August, I believe. Typically.
Okay, and we also might have a couple of fire staff, Counselor Whitney, that'll help also with your volunteer appreciation.
You're muted, Mayor.
I'm sorry, that was August second, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Not hearing anything under ordinances or public hearings, no appointments, down to Counselor Spleedoff, did you have something?
Yes, I would like to announce our next library board meeting. On July tenth at four P M. Be held at the library.
Okay. Got it.
And they do not do Zoom.
Okay.
It's been brought up, but they refuse to do Zoom, so.
Okay, we can possibly talk about that offline, but let's make sure it's on the city's calendar and James knows about it. So I don't see committee reports on here, but I do want to take just a, I thought committee reports would be on tonight's meeting. And I missed up that I think committee reports is on the twenty first. But because we do have some upcoming stuff, I do want to report real quickly um that our WAC um committee met met uh. Today, that's myself, Counselor Whitney, Counselor Hooker and James joined us. Um, we discussed a little bit about, um, I spoke with our engineer at Hodges today. And I called him and asked him a little bit about um. What his timeline is looking like for the um engineer proposal. And he did let me know that things are looking a little better than what he had originally anticipated, seeing that our last bid was over ten years ago. They felt that the bones of the building are looking pretty good. And um they're hoping to have something to us here within the next couple of weeks. And um so our committee is really gonna, once we get that through, take a look at that, come up with some proposals. And we are also going to start immediately advertising um for citizens to join our committee. And we're looking for um, well, we're really looking for people just to join us that really want to be involved in the future of that building. Um, deciding what types of businesses would go in there and really um just looking at the big picture. The other thing is we have a walkthrough happening on, is it Friday the fifteenth, James? I cannot remember the time.
Yeah, I believe that's ten thirty.
Okay, so one of the things we talked about in our WAC committee meeting is that might be something good for us to actually advertise. As a council event so that more than three counselors could attend that. I know Jan wants to be there. I would like to be there and so does Counselor Whitney. And since it is a council topic, um I and I actually said I bet Counselor Spleedoff would like to be there too. So um we'll put that down as maybe a special meeting, I think, since there will be more than, there'll be four or more counselors there. Yeah, is there any questions on that?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, if it's a, if it's. A meeting or a event to do a walkthrough and. Talk about what's going on or what may change in the WAC. Are you positive that it would be considered a meeting because you won't be making. Discussions to vote on anything?
So my understanding is if it's four or more counselors and it's information that would be being given to us. Um, in regards to topics that would be upcoming topics that we would have to decide on, that should constitute a public meeting. And because the WAC is a topic that would constitute a public meeting, so we would need to notify the public. To have the same opportunity if we have four more counselors there.
Okay, well, I would like to suggest that since the WAC is a big deal to the community, could we publicize it like? Uh, maybe on. The um. Social media platforms that are commonly used in Oak Ridge and the Highway fifty eight Herald.
Yeah. So that's what we talked about today was number one, advertising that we would like to fill committee seats on our um, or excuse me, citizen seats on our WAC committee. And then include that opportunity to walk through the WAC for those people and advertise that and put it through the Facebook page. Go ahead. Yeah.
Just have you confirmed with Sarah Ultimus on on the time for that because. Okay, because that might change a bit because I think it was part of the their funding committees. So I'm not sure what time.
Yeah, I can confirm. I can confirm with her on the time. Really.
And this is.
Go ahead.
Chief Martin, can I make a point that maybe should be a question should be asked?
Yes.
There's no insurance on the WAC, so if public was to be in there and got hurt, uh we would be on our own for that. So that might be a. Question on how to do that uh with. City attorney maybe or something?
Yeah, I can call him and ask. It just makes it difficult if we want four or more counselors to be able to be involved in the walkthrough. So I'll call and consult with Sarah and also um talk with the city's attorney.
And I'm fine with it. I I would like to be there, but if if it's uh turns out only. Uh, three councils can be there all by.
Okay. James, did you have something?
I was just gonna suggest if if that's a concern, one option might be would be to video record. To where I make that available, but again, that that would have to be coordinated through Sarah Ultimus's committee.
That's a good idea, too. That's a good alternative. Counselor Hooker?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding. Um, we are not talking about letting citizens go through this one, correct? We're just talking about additional counselors going?
Okay, so the way the way that it works is if we if we follow Oregon public meeting laws. Once you have four or more counselors involved in a city event. That is involving um city topics that could lead to votes, which, you know, if you consider the WAC is a big project on the plate. And there's going to be a lot of discussion going on where there will be votes and planning going on. That would constitute a quorum. The difference is if we're at a barbecue, you know, and a volunteer appreciation and all city counselors are there. That's different. That's not, you know, something that would be voted on, so that's the difference.
Right, what my question was is the counselors, if all of us want to go. That part of it I understand, but we're not asking, we're not. I guess we're not letting citizens go through it with us on that date. Is that correct or not?
I'm sorry, can you say that one more time? It cut out a little bit.
Sorry about that. No, my my thing was, my question is. I understand the meeting laws and that type of thing, but if all of the uh counselors want to go. But there are no citizens that we're asking to have them go with us, correct? It'll be, it would be like Sarah Ultimus group and the counselors would be it. On our part, am I correct or not?
Well, when we met today, we did talk about inviting citizens. The problem is is once you have four or more counselors, you you must in you must invite citizens.
Okay. And that's, I knew that I knew that we had talked about it, but after what Chief Martin just said, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, that is a really good point that we should consider the fact that it doesn't have insurance, but um. I mean, the funding committee, those are all citizens as well. Those aren't city employees or, you know, so.
Exactly.
Definitely consideration, so probably maybe myself and James should conference the attorney and ask where we're at on that.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, good, good questions. Go ahead, Counselor Spleedoff.
I think uh Counselor Kenyon was before me, but.
Well, your lineup, your hands first, but it's okay, whoever goes first.
What I wanted to make sure is we have no insurance on this building. Uh, so that includes your committee. And Sarah's uh committee and everything. Uh, so we're still kind of putting these, are the city in jeopardy of allowing anyone in there at all, are we not?
Well, I think that's what we just discussed, but I also need to bring up the obvious here. How are we going to make plans for the future if nobody's allowed to ever step foot in the building? I mean, we have to use a little bit of common sense here, right?
Well, that and I think it may be a question for the, Laurie, we may have to put uh. Use part of that money as a temporary insurance on the building.
Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Um. Why couldn't the meeting for. Whatever exactly you're planning on doing at that meeting be held somewhere else? Maybe with maps of the building hung up? You know, uh, not maps, but uh what are they called? Blueprint type things? I mean, for ideas and stuff, does it really have to be inside the building?
This is a walkthrough with an architect that's coming through. You know, I'll have to get the details from Sarah Ultimus. I have not been briefed on everything and nor has Counselor Whitney. Um, I I believe or is, I guess I don't know enough details on what's all included.
Okay, so then I'll back up now that I understand if it's a walkthrough with a architect. I don't think that should be. A public meeting with more than three counselors. We should try and keep that small. And then if you want to do a public meeting for ideas, I mean, why would we want? Someone that we're paying to come and do the walkthrough to be bombarded with citizens and multiple groups that don't have.
Yeah.
The council only. Um, has authority over that building, so.
That's a good point.
I think it probably all should be rethought.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. It's probably better just to hold off.
Okay.
Counselor Spleedoff?
Yes, I just wanted to find out uh the insurance, is that on the whole property or just the building? Does the property itself have insurance on it? Or not? Because that could be an open liability to us if if they don't, we may have to have a fence put around it.
Yeah, we have been discussing fencing off the property. Chief Martin brought that to council, I believe, two different times.
Okay, because if we haven't got any insurance on the building, I assume that insurance would have covered the property and building both. So we're opening ourselves for a liability because we know a lot of people cut through there. And we've had people sleeping over there. And if it's on the property as a whole, or is it on just the building itself? Are there two separate insurance policies?
I could speak to that real fast.
Okay.
Uh, as far as my understanding is, the building does not have insurance on it. I believe the rest of it would be covered because I believe Horton Park and the skate park and the others are still covered. Insurance drops the building insurance and will not reinsure it.
Okay, I I I'd like to have a clarification uh just for sure. It's, you know, I may be going overboard, but. Just to make sure that the property itself is insured. Uh, it's, I'm sorry to bring it up so late, but. That's a very important part and if they're covering the property, no problem. But if they're not, then we're open for a big lawsuit. If that can be checked out, I'd sure appreciate it. Can you see to that? Or uh, James?
Yeah, I can check into that. My understanding is that that. Any engineering firm, you know, carries their own insurance. For their employees when they're doing inspections like that, that's why it's a good idea to uh hire, you know, licensed insured contractors versus fly by night. Guy next door sort of thing. Um, so I mean, they obviously know the risks going into those buildings if if we had to. I mean, if you're asking, uh, should we ensure the building again? I think that would be kind of cost prohibitive and we.
We can't ensure the building.
We can't. But I just want to make sure that the property itself is insured.
I think Chief Martin answered that.
Is that a positive, Chief?
That would take two phone calls to make sure, but I'm. Eighty five percent positive it is.
Okay, I'd like you to make the someone, I know I can't ask you to do it, but uh we can ask the city administrator to uh.
Yeah.
Make sure that that is done.
Okay, I'll check into that.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
I was just gonna suggest a similar that we probably have a copy of our insurance policy and maybe the council could just see it in an email. Or have our city administrator summarize it and send us an email with the summary of what he has found in the contract.
Agreed.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any more uh council discussion or can we go on to public comment? All right, James, do you have anyone there at City Hall for public? All right, James, do you have anyone there at City Hall for public comment?
Oh, no.
Okay, on to public comment for Zoom. I see Mr. Barclay. Go ahead, Mr. Barclay, you have three minutes.
Real quickly, uh, happy birthday to Rusty Aquwin who is celebrating her thirty-ninth birthday for at least the fifteenth time that I know of. And my second, I guess it's a question for council, following the discussion on the Westford IGA's, we've got eighteen thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars additional for fire and fifteen thousand dollars additional for, uh, police protection on their contract. Those contracts being paid into the general fund, which the police department is part of, that part would, would, I mean, it's being transferred in, within the same fund and, and would be a little less visible, but the, the Emergency Services Fund that covers fire is a special fund. Should we expect a corresponding transfer from the general fund of eighteen thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars per year to the fire department, uh, if the intent of those increases is to, uh, allow Westford citizens to participate and contribute to the, uh, PSF revenue? Not so much in the, in the police fund, but the, uh, Emergency Services Fund is a, is a special fund, a separate from the general fund, and, and we should be seeing a corresponding transfer, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, I can answer that really quickly. Mr. Barclay, all of the revenue that the fire department receives goes into the Emergency Services Fund. It doesn't go into the general fund, so they would, they would realize all of it from that contract as we have been.
Well, and I, and I appreciate that, but the, the money from those contracts will be paid into the general fund, correct?
No.
It, it's paid into the Emergency Services Fund?
Yes.
Okay.
For the emergent, for the, for the fire contract, it goes, it shows up in the budget in Emergency Service.
Okay, so, okay.
Police contract is in general fund.
Right, right. That answers it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment? All right, hearing no more public comment, we will adjourn the meeting at twenty thirty-three. And thank you guys for a good meeting.
Thank you.
Good night.
Are we gonna have the executive session?
No.
No, was it on the agenda?
Yes, it is. Number eighteen.
It was probably just leftover from prior. There's no ORS under Audi, so that's just a
Okay.
That's just a placeholder.
Just like what it says, public hearings, ordinances, all those things. We didn't have a public hearing, so had we, want to be there?
Thank you.
All right.
Mayor, can I have a minute?
Absolutely.
I'd like to thank Counselor Kenyon for her hard work and going into detail and answering Brian's, um, public comment. I truly appreciate that.
No problem.
I second that, Counselor Coker. Thank you. I as well appreciate that.
As well.
Thank you.
All right, good night all. Adjourned at twenty thirty-four.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.